Tense to look at the minutes?
I did not. But if other people did, I'm sure they're fine.
I had two little things. Under the Director's Report, the first bullet point, it was neither one of those boards. It was Linda Sanderson and Carolyn, so Town Manager and Linda's title is...
She's the treasurer?
Yes. They were the ones who reviewed it and made the change. And then the last bullet point under Director's Report in the second line, I think the question mark can just be a period because that, as far as I'm concerned, that captures the essence. I didn't have any other.
I guessed on the adjournment time, by the way, because I didn't write it down. And I remember getting home around 8:15. I remember it was not a lengthy meeting. It was about an hour.
Can I have a motion? Unless does, well, a motion to approve the minutes to at least get them on the floor into second.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 2024 with changes noted.
And I second that.
Are there any further comments? All in favor? Unanimous thank you. Patrick was scrounging around to make sure that he had corrected and final versions of minutes. And I know he was in touch with the two of you. But I thought it was just worth mentioning that once minutes or other documents on which we have voted are finalized, if we can all just be sure to send a final copy to Patrick with some notation in there indicating that it is, in fact, the last and official version. We do not have public for comment. Just a couple of things from Patrick's report and then his follow-up email today, which I didn't bring. Oh, fudge.
You didn't bring the email or the report?
I didn't bring the email. I have a copy of the Director's Report dated 3/12, but the email update he sent.
I have it here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Just to note that given that the community has a number of residents now for whom English is not a primary language, he had been in touch with Greenfield and is going to follow their example to some extent in order to be able to have Spanish and French available on our computers.
I just want to say that he had reached out to me before he talked to Greenfield, and I just want to acknowledge that I called Joe Comfort's office, which is how we got led to Greenfield. And they were really responsive and got back to me right away and said, here's a town with a similar situation, and here's a director. So I just want to acknowledge how quickly
She's a new director, too. I think she just took over the job last summer.
Yeah, so kudos to Greenfield and kudos to Joe Comfort's office, who, you know, Patrick said, what can you do? And I said, well, I'll call Joe Comfort. And they were really great, and they were really helpful and said, you know, Greenfield's doing this great job. And also said that they might be able to help us find, you know, keep an eye out for grant funding or anything we can find around it. So they were really helpful.
Sort of kind of tangentially related to that, I was at the West Springfield Library this past week, and near their circulation desk, they had any number of little in-house produced pamphlets on several different kinds of resources that might be useful to newly arrived people for whom English is not the first language. And while the resources that they referenced may not be available or readily available to people living here, just the fact that there was this brochure and whatever, I brought them in and gave them to Sue.
Well, I also wanted, and I owe a follow-up call to Joe Comfort's office. If we want to invite them to come here and meet with folks like ever, and like, you know, office hours here or something like that, because they were really interested and they were really helpful. I don't know, I know they're busy, but maybe even Joe Comfort wouldn't come, but maybe, you know, one of...
She did office hours here like a year or two.
Yeah, she has done it last year.
Specifically even to meet with folks who, you know, like for resources and stuff like that. Should I kind of email around, see if they're interested in coming back? Or I'll check with Patrick.
Yeah, I think that would...
I'll check with Patrick first.
Right, because finding the time...
Like I started the loop and reached out to Comfort for him, but now I need to circle back and thank them.
Send Pat, go ahead and send Patrick an email. You don't have to wait until he comes back.
Yeah, okay.
I think that would be an effective way to go about it. Thank you. What was it Patrick wanted us to vote on?
From the email?
I think the roof.
Right, something to do with...
On the Charlotte Smith?
Oh, yes, the money for programming taken from the Charlotte Smith fund. Authorizing the use of funds. Oh, up to $2,000. Okay. When we received the Charlotte Smith bequest, research was done by several people because no one knew her terribly well. I had a tangential quilting connection to her. But I spoke with someone who did know her very, very well in trying to come up with ideas and suggestions for ways to use the money that she left in some way that was connected to her life and might be relevant. And she was a scientist and worked for, I think, Department of Defense contractors, either Department of Defense directly or contractors. And one of those suggestions had been programming for young people that focused on various aspects. And so what Patrick is asking is that the trustees authorize the expenditure of up to $2,000 for summer programs to be paid for by the Shar Smith Fund. And I would like to make a motion to that effect.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
The other item in his email regards a future Select Board meeting talking about a charging station at the library and asking for a trustee or trustees to attend the meeting to be present.
Do you know when the Select Board is looking to do that?
In the email, it says next week's meeting.
They usually meet on the first and third Wednesdays.
By their meeting this week.
It could be tomorrow.
Right, they're meeting on the 20th this week.
But you're right. I was thinking it was Tuesday because I'm so programmed to be on the like right after Tuesday.
I know. I had to like, I had to like remind myself like five times that we had a meeting tonight because it's
ordinary. I know that they you know, they're always doing Zoom as well as in person. And I am more than happy to Zoom in and just listen in the background. And Jack, would you be interested in? If you're available? Not to say that you're not interested.
This Wednesday I won't be.
Okay, that's fine. Then I will...
I'm kind of wondering where the, like, why this wasn't brought to the trustees or where this came from. We are the stewards of the building. So I just know that, you know, in my past iteration as a trustee, we took care of the building and we take care of this building. And I just think it's important that if somebody has an idea that they come to the trustees.
There should be conversation at the administrative level as well as at the board level.
Do you think that when Patrick wrote this and he said, his understanding was there was an installation of a car charging station at the library, that that phrase of the library was broad-based for the whole parking lot?
I don't think so.
No.
Because it was brought up that night at the it was brought up at the meeting.
At the strategic planning.
Thank you. At the strategic planning meeting. And Patrick specifically asked the question if it was going, if this was something that the whole town was doing or if it was just for the library. And he was told it was just for the library.
Which we looked at, we looked at the possibility of a charging station out there. Allison brought up, I forget what the name of the company was, to our meeting. There just were a number of logistical challenges we weren't ready to meet at that point. So it's not like this is out of line in terms of like, oh, no, no cars there. But like, to do this without our participation in the conversation is bizarre.
It seems like, you know, it seems to me like the pipeline for something like that should be either Carolyn to Patrick or Select Board to us. Like, that should be the pipeline of information.
I mean, I understand that Jane has the role of being liaison, but there should have been other conversations prior to that. I did talk to Patrick about this last week before he left. And my recollection is even though the sign is right out there by the door, parking for electric, that it is not possible to put a charging station there. If we were to have one, it would have to be at the far end by the end of the children's room. I believe...
I thought that down here was also an option.
Well, that is now what apparently is under consideration, is running something from Goodwin to that side of the parking lot. I am not sure, but I will find out tomorrow night.
Oh, it's the far side of the parking lot. Which technically is, I wonder, are the parking spots on the other side of the driveway considered part of the library? Or are they considered part of the Goodwin building?
I think they're...
They're part of the Goodwin building, then...
But they're not exclusive. It's town parking. The only designated parking is the V1 parking. But the rest of it is town parking.
When this building was under construction, did they pre-wire for electric? For an EV charger?
We did discuss that when the rep came, and I don't remember.
I don't know. Okay. So I think we've taken care of the items.
I'm just looking at the agenda for their meeting on the 20th to see if there's to see if there's anything about it.
I went to their last meeting and Jane made the point of saying, we're not discussing the EV tonight. So that was 10 days ago.
Maybe we could write an email and ask. Who's the, is Molly the chair?
No, Amy Parsons.
Amy Parsons?
Is chair. But I can ask Jennifer. Jennifer puts together the agendas and there may be something buried under one of the headings.
Originally, we're going to be looking at some possibility of solar on the transfer station. But that's gotten tabled. That's no longer...
Looks like we may be getting a skinny pancake.
Those are good.
Yeah.
What is a skinny pancake?
It's a crepe. Restaurant. There's one up in Burlington. That's the only reason I know of it.
In Woodstock.
Okay. I don't have my... Anyway, that's all I see on the agenda.
It's noteworthy thing.
My daughter will be really pleased to learn about it.
Okay, I don't believe there are any other significant items. Except I do know that Julia and Emily are have been spending a lot of time putting together programs for children. And I'm usually here on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. And the little preschooler types and smaller are very much here with their big people. And just for public information, I will mention that in addition to tax forms in English, we also have them with instructions in Spanish if someone were to be looking for that. Okay, Board Subcommittee. Strategic Planning, Ms. Joanne.
So thank you all for coming on Tuesday. I think we had a really good session. Kind of excited about the information we do have. I did send it to all of you and I have it up here. The next step was, I called our trustee, data analyst Allison, and I said, remember you said you would help? What do you think our next step is? So she was excited, looked over the data, asked me, who was there, what types of folks were there? And said that she feels like the next step with all of the data is to cast a little bit wider of the net. And so I was hoping with this group's support, I would leave the idea of like, what questions to ask in the data analyst's hands instead of mine, because she'll be more likely to interpret, you know, know what to ask and how to ask it. And I was hoping that's what Allison and I could trudge forward and start to put together before our next meeting, a plan for that. And before I did that, I did want to get some input from this group on just what you thought of the day, what you thought, you know, I know it's a lot to look at, but in general, what you thought of the results. I know it was a lot to take in over the weekend, so.
I thought it was I thought it was remarkable how in such a short process, we could generate what felt like a pretty solid and like, not planned, but sort of menu of topics that all seemed nothing jumped out as like, where is this go? You know, like, it was, it feels like it really like jumped into things that I don't know, I've perceived, I've seen. It was a diverse-ish group for the size that it was.
We did...
When you said six minutes, I was like, come on, what are we going to do in six minutes? And then we, those lists were huge.
Yes. I mean, I was glad we had teens. We had, Patrick found us our dedicated night patron. We had, we had daytime patrons. I mean, we really kind of pulled as many. We had friends. We...
We didn't have the doubters and skeptics and...
I wanted that, but I mean, probably they're not likely to come, right?
That's like the hardest group to...
But it's important that everyone's voice be here, but...
Yeah, I would like to see some people with young families.
There were people that had young children there.
Wasn't there someone who wasn't able to come with the young person?
There was one person who wasn't able to come with a young person. And there was someone at your table with a young person and...
No, I mean, young people with babies, like, like the toddler group people. Young parents.
Yes, that person couldn't come. They were sick that day. But we have a representative from that group who will get this information and I'll be asking for their input. So there was someone on the list that fit that qualification.
So Joanne, it sounds like you're going to talk with Allison more. What is your hope? Like, where from here?
Well, I'm hoping that Allison, you know, works her data magic and comes up with like, you know, things that are connected. I think, like, for me, there were things that clearly stood out, right? But I'm hoping that if we can get a questionnaire to a wider group, then we could find out, are we on the right track? I mean, we look at things like hours, that's like, you know, we have to like really, we can't just jump on and make changes by a small group. And so I'm hoping that we have like a report from the expert next time. It's really, I kind of felt like my expertise was like knowing how to do these and pulling them together. And now it's time to put it in the hands of the person who can really chomp through them.
So share, if you will, around opportunities.
You want me to open opportunities? So we had like a lot of programming. I noticed there was a lot of programming, which is interesting because we felt that way when we opened the library, that that was really important to us.
This seems like such, this seems like a really rich area for further exploration. Because I think the strengths and weaknesses, I felt like the quick time was good. The opportunity is you really have to engage your imagination. And so I guess I do wonder, I guess, a little bit about the methods on this one, just because like, I felt like our group was kind of starting to think outside the box right towards the end. And so I wonder whether like...
And we might get there, yeah.
Some good iterations that can really develop that. Because like, to say like, we've got, we've got programming, we should have more programming. Okay, let's keep going with that.
Well, I think that's what will happen. I think, I think, and I don't want to speak for Allison, but that she'll probably look, and it's why I wasn't so worked up about like really dividing them up, is like seeing like, oh, okay, it looks like people want programming. What do we do? Do we have small focus groups? Like, yeah, I think that we would absolutely have to do that. But I think she's saying, let's survey first, make sure that that feels okay to an outside, like a bigger group. And then we might do focus groups and come back after that. And which is why I hesitated to give the Tuesday night group a like, we're going to come back in a month, because it may take us a little while.
It will.
And they'll, of course, be invited to anything that we do. But I also didn't want to put in that group's hands the kind of task-oriented, boring work of getting that stuff done. Like, yes, be part of it. We want your ideas, but we don't want you to have to like make a survey and get it out. So that's kind of what I was hoping, that this group would be okay with going forward.
I wanted to make two observations. It seemed to me that across the board, staff were appreciated and more were wanted. And any threats to staff caused a fair amount of concern. In terms of the opportunities, it's like, if we only had a basement. There are things in terms of just requiring physical space. When Alex was talking about, oh, someplace where we can bring our friends from out of town. Well, I mean, you can do that in there, but I think what she's really sort of reflecting is that after school, that room is full of kids. And then they start migrating out into other spaces in the library. Basically, what I've seen, there's not, it's not a problem, except sometimes the noise gets to be a little bit much. But and who would have thought in the planning process that the YA room might not be large enough?
Right, because we didn't have one before, so.
And we also had to go with numbers and we went with...
Yes, they're absolutely working through.
So I'm going to say something out of the box right now, just answering that, like, and I don't want to get stuck in a rabbit hole, but you know, if this room isn't used in the afternoons, maybe it's turned into a homework center for teens. Like, there's ways to rethink the same space and use it to like help expand.
I have seen them in the small meeting room sometimes.
I think part of what that is, is also kind of like hearing what's underneath some of the things that people have said. So right, like, they were talking about like, the building should have a basement. Well, okay, that's physically impossible. The building should have a second floor. Okay, so actually what you're saying is we need more space. What do we need more space for? How can we repurpose space for that? So like, the reading underneath thing, I think, is part of that next step that I think will be really interesting.
And you said two things. Oh, staffing and space. Did you have any like thing?
No, not that people who...
And I will be sending this out to the participants tonight. I just wanted to hear this group first and then I'll be sending it out this evening. And just kind of an update on where we're going, so that they're part of the process and invested.
Thank you. Thank you for...
I also think it will help, like, when we think about Patrick's goals, goals for the... Like, we can start bringing everything in alignment and it'll be, it'll work nicely, I think.
Anything else on that, or shall we move on to the roof?
Do you have everything you need to move forward?
As long as this group is kind of, you don't have to vote, but just okay with kind of Allison taking in a little bit and bringing a proposal back.
Seems like the right next step.
Oh, no, she's...
Now, does she have time to do that?
Yeah. Yeah, she, I checked with her. I said, she already has this too. And she's already looked it over and kind of, that was her first suggestion for me to bring here.
So the roof.
Yeah.
The opposite.
So Jack and I met with Patrick. We looked over the proposals and then we found out the roof is leaking. It was in that order, right? I did talk to Mark Sullivan today. Mark immediately said, before I did anything, I would just get someone out there to look at the roof and see what's going on. He suggested Florence Roofing. They do a lot of commercial roof. He said that roofs... Sounds funny. Sounds funny. He, you know, we could go with someone else, but it was, I asked him, "Could you make a suggestion of who does commercial roofs?" And he said, he thinks that, you know, it could be the flashing underneath and Jack pointed out, it could be something totally different, right? So Jack, do you want to like pick up and...
Yeah, rather than going with an engineering company right now, it seems to make sense to talk to a professional roofing company and see what they find out. You know, rather than doing this broad sweep, focus. Focus our efforts a little bit and see what the problems are. Is there a chance that there's some pipes there that are leaking, some condensation? There's all sorts of possibilities. I think the engineer would give a broader sweep of everything going on with the roof. I think Florence Roofing with Mark's suggestion, which was pretty brilliant and pretty well timed, is the right next step to go.
Yeah, I was thinking about this in terms of just, if this was your own house and you noticed a leak in your ceilings, what would you do? You would call a roofer immediately and say, "This has got to stop."
Well, I... I'm sorry.
And then deal with other issues, but first find out from a roofer, why is the roof leaking?
Well, I think the whole process has been evolved, because it was initially, "Do we need to do something to the roof before we can put solar panels on?" And now that there's evidence of water infiltration, it changes the focus so that I think this may be an appropriate, a more appropriate step at this time.
I was wondering, given the weather next week and the concern about water coming in, if it would be appropriate if either one of us called and got a roofer out here, we allocated the money and/or put it in Sue's lap. Like, I don't know what the next steps were, but it seems like we shouldn't wait to have a roofer look at it. Given that Patrick's away, I mean, it is our house, right? It's our house.
I don't think it should be one of us. I think it needs to be the director or the assistant director. I will talk to Sue tomorrow morning and I am sure that she and Patrick will talk, because he's fine with being in touch with him about business matters. This is not just a lie on the beach under the palm trees. Because he called me at nine o'clock this morning and said, "Have you seen?" I'm like, "No, I haven't seen those emails yet." But I think that would be the best way to move ahead. So I will talk to Sue tomorrow and actually, I will send an email tonight to Sue and Patrick and ask them to figure out between the two of them how they might prefer to move forward.
Yeah, and I know like, as trustee chair, I've had to do those things in the past, like, but what I would say is that, do we need to have a vote for money? And if so, could we have it tonight so that they know they have funding? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a maintenance fund of sorts that you can draw on?
There are several, there's not one specifically dedicated to maintenance. There, I believe there are still some construction funds left. And if not those, we have library incentive grant, municipal equalization grant money from the state that we could use for that purpose. So I will let the comptroller figure out which, or Patrick figure out which pocket it comes from. But if someone would like to make a motion for up to a thousand or fifteen hundred?
I would make a motion up to $2,000 to come out of the fund that Patrick and/or Linda Sanderson think is the best fund to remove that money from.
And I second that. And I just don't know Florence Roofing well enough to know if they're booked out for weeks or months, or if they have someone that they can send out in emergencies.
Good point. Well, we'll find out. Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
And roofing issues just need to get handled immediately, as fast as we possibly can.
Oh, envelope, yeah, build an envelope.
It's interesting. We had Mass Save come to our house a couple of weeks ago and they actually discovered a small water leak by our chimney, our metal chimney inside. But that's something that I can handle. It's an easy fix. I'm glad they found it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mark pointed out, it could be the flashing under the roof. Like, there's just so many. So this is good, that we're like, the roofer might look and give us some good information.
Can I ask, was it the same place that there were spots that they saw on the ceiling? Like last year, or was it a different location?
There was the one little spot in the local history room. There is now a second spot in the local history room and one in Patrick's office. So it's contiguous, but not exactly the same.
And I just wonder if there's any piping or something to the bathrooms or anywhere else that it might be condensing? I don't know. There's so many possibilities.
I will hazard a guess that there would not be plumbing, plumbing water there. There could be condensation from air handling. But we're not running the air conditioners right now yet. Anyway, I don't think our speculation is gonna help the matter, but...
Thanks for asking on it, Lynn.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, and we'll go home and do that. Does anybody have anything else as an agenda item? Or I can go home and go to work now.
We did get you worked. I think that doing the minutes, maybe if we could just set a schedule, so we know who's taking minute notes every month.
I have no objections whatsoever. I said I would do tonight's.
Is that all right, Dana?
That's a fine idea. It's of the fairest idea.
April, May, June. How far out do we want to go? Do we want to do it?
Well, there's gonna be an election in May.
Yeah, there'll be an election and then electing new officers, which would include a clerk, so.
We'll just have a couple of months.
Would it be the April and May? Is our meeting before the election?
Our April meeting?
Yeah.
No, May meeting.
Yeah. Well, when is the election? I know you have...
It's on the town clerk's webpage. Well, we'll have to figure that out tonight, but but at the least, we would need, we would still need someone to do the minutes for the May meeting, because even if a new clerk is elected, they may not be in the middle of taking minutes when they are elected. So we need, we need an April and a May person.
So Susan, I'll volunteer for May.
The election is May 21st.
And our meeting is the 14th. In which case then, we need someone to do minutes in June as well. All right, so for April, do you want April or June?
I kind of feel like I have a lot with this. And I feel like most of my stuff on the agenda was mine, so I prefer to take minutes maybe later when I have less on the agenda. Kind of feels like...
Do we want to wait for June?
Who's in for April?
Me, and then you.
Well, we'll just leave that for now then. Thank you, Susan. Do we have any other items or observations? I don't know Jess and Susan if you would want it or not, but I consolidated all of the information from Joanne's spreadsheet.
I think I can give these to everyone, sorry.
Oh, I gave one to Jack because he asked for it.
But whoever...
But there, no, there are copies. I made copies. It just, the one thing I did was put spaces in so that
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go across all of the collections, things are...
And this data will come out arranged differently fairly soon.
Well, yeah, it's a way to look at it a little bit...
Yep.
Sometimes paper has an advantage. That's all.
Thank you.
I found it easier to sort of absorb. But I'm the oldest one, so there you go.
So are you open for taking questions and other things? I guess I'm wondering, does anything else need to happen with the meadow and the plantings? I'm just wondering. We're getting toward greener times and Robins are flying into town.
I don't have enough information to know exactly what a next step for that is. And it's not gonna be that many weeks until we actually have a meeting, because I will get it in on time, so we meet the second Tuesday.
And one other bit of business, we've been pushing on the climate change committee to investigate the possibility of putting solar on the transfer station. So having, you know, a two-megawatt system, which is enormous, there. Now, given Amherst's history and other towns, often it can take years for that to happen. But we are doing a little bit of a push with that.
Good.
Fantastic. I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.